Good Lord, we thank you for this opportunity together today to conduct county business. Just hope and pray you help us make the right decisions and keep our personnel, our uniformed personnel, keep them safe because they overseas and in this United States making these meetings possible for us to be free when we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, approval of minutes of prior meeting that had been October 28th.
So move.
All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Sharon Noah Street, treasurer, presentation approval of cash statement.
Our cash balances as of today, November the 12th, 2013. General checking account, we have six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-six cents. Our tax pool account, we have three million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. A total of four million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and forty cents. Our tax pool rate is zero point zero four four five percent.
Move approved cash statement?
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Sharon Noah Street, presentation approval of registered claims to be counseled by court.
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Lawrence Partham Auditor, payment of county bills.
We have pre-approved expenditures for October the 30th of 2013 of twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. We have pre-approved expenditures for November the 5th of 2013, three thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-six cents. Our pre-approved manuals for the period October 28th of 2013 to November the 12th of 2013 was four hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. We're submitting to commissioners' court today, November the 12th, 2013, three hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents for total claim submissions of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Payroll since the last commissioner's court, total gross payroll, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Payroll taxes, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven twelve. Retirement, fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Total payroll and related fringes of four hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-two cents.
Move with county bills?
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Rose, we got something.
Yes, we do. It's always a pleasure to recognize employees who have been with the county extended period of time. And we have such a lady here this morning, Tracy Morgan. She has been with the district clerk after the past ten years. So Tracy, this summer...
Tracy is our chief deputy district clerk, and she is an outstanding employee, and it has been a pleasure working with her for the past three years.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have an employee who is an former employee. He decided to retire after a long time with the county.
Danny, would you come up, please?
Twenty-five years, eight months, and that will help her.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say, Judge?
Yeah, I just know this, that for the past fifteen years, I've been running up down this hall, and I've never seen him that he didn't have a smile on his face.
Well, I did see him without a smile because he didn't have anything to eat one day. But I'm proud of you, Danny, and I hope you have everything you want.
Thank the Lord.
Okay, item number eight, Vivian Baloo with Carl Griffiths and Associates, authorization for county judge to execute amendment number five of Hurricane Ike disaster recovery round one. This is a GLO contract number ten dash five zero zero four dash zero 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 dash four nine seven eight.
Vivian, good morning.
Good morning. Yes, amendment five will allow the county to pay engineering fees to construct three detention ponds in Sour Lake, and this will be the final project for round one. Are there any questions?
Is this the one, the one in Martha Sales we got canceled?
No, that's in round two point two. So we'll have several detention ponds going.
Ken, this is yours.
Yeah. I move authorize county judge to execute amendment number five of Hurricane Ike disaster recovery round one, GLO contract number ten, five zero zero four, zero zero dash four nine seven eight.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number nine, Rose Stewart, personnel, presentation of safety board.
Okay, Texas Association of Counties has had a conference a couple weeks ago, which I went to, and at that time, the county has received a gold star safety award. We've received a reward for the past eight years, but we never received a gold star. And one of the reasons is because our experience modifier under the workers' comp has, in 2012, was point nine eight percent, in 2013 was point nine one percent, and in 2014, it has gone down to zero point seven three percent. So, I mean, zero point nine eight, zero point nine one, and now it's zero point seven three, which is really a reduction in our workers' comp premium. And I want to appreciate, say, appreciate the court and, you know, helping out with the safety program and supporting the safety program, and hopefully we can go on that train and keep it, keep it low.
Of the two hundred and fifty-four counties, there was only seven of these?
Uh, nine.
Nine.
Nine, yeah.
So it's a pretty good achievement.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, the employees are doing their, their job and being safe and watching out for each other, and I'm just really, really proud of the accomplishment.
Well, I can't help but respond to Rose because she's on my case or something.
Yeah.
Or it's wrong.
All the time.
And then the commissioners, you know, this basically comes mostly from the commissioners as far as support on this, because they have to take their people on safety meetings and stuff, and I know it interrupts their day and stuff, but it's paid off.
It has. It definitely has. And I appreciate all the other elected officials and department head that allows their employees to watch the safety videos, because I think it does help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you, Rose.
Okay, item number ten, Rose Stewart, discussion action to change waiting period for benefits for new hires.
Yes, at the sign meeting, and I think all of you commissioners received an email about all these going-ons with the new insurance and the changes. There are two changes at this time that are going to have to be done for us, and one I would like to get approved in this court if possible, effective December one, and that is to change the waiting period on new hires. It was first day of the month following ninety days, but the Affordable Care Act does not allow any waiting periods, periods over ninety days. So I would like to change the personnel policy reading to go to sixty-day waiting period, but not effective until first day of the following month.
Wait, I read all that that I received from TAC. The law says it cannot be over ninety days, but we are ninety days.
We are. Currently, we are over ninety days, because currently, it's the first day of the month following ninety days. So we need to change the wording on that.
Okay, but why do we need to go to sixty?
Well...
Safety?
No, it just, what she's trying to get at is, right now, we could go almost up to a hundred and twenty days under the current policy.
Okay.
Now, with the changeover from to sixty rule, hard, hard, we're under a hard ninety. We're just simply wanting to go to a hard sixty.
Oh, so it gives a safety margin?
Right, safety margin, yes.
That's what I'm trying to get.
And if the court so approves it, that will be effective December one. Now, next year, and I'm just going to touch on this, all employees that are part-time and were, but were more than thirty-plus hours a week, they have to be offered insurance also. But that would not be effective until December of next year. It's, there's going to be a lot of extra reporting that's going to have to be done at that time, but for right now, we would just like to get the waiting period changed if the court so approves.
So will they be insured on the sixty-first day?
They'll be insured the first day of the month following the sixty days.
So move. Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, Sharon Whiteley with the Health Department, authorization for county judge to sign memorandum of understanding with Orange County for Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The state is requiring that we have a MOU between Harden County Health Department and Orange County. Basically, what they want is a document stating that we receive the funds for the grant and that we're going to carry out the grant activities. And this grant is the Public Health Preparedness Grant. And one of the major activities under the grant is to identify, to have five pod sites in Orange County, and five pod sites have been identified in Orange County, and it is in the packet, and we would also need to submit that to the state.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay. Any other discussion? So move. Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Who's our liaison going to be? Orange County will designate liaison. Who's that going to be?
The Health Department.
Shouldn't that be in the minutes?
The Health Department have hired a person, and that's Amanda Moore, and she is here today.
Good morning.
Well, that should be in the minutes, who the liaison is going to be. What's her name?
Amanda Moore.
Okay.
She's not a new one. She's been here a while.
Yeah, she traveled all the way from Spurger?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, item number twelve, casting a vote for nominees to serve on the Harden County Appraisal District Board of Directors and adoption of resolution number twenty-four days thirteen regarding the same.
Judge and court, as you're aware, normally we divide our votes in such a way that we will assure that there is one board member out of every school district. That's been pretty well traditional. This year, there are only five nominees. They're the one, they represent all five school districts, so I would propose that we just take our fourteen-hundred-and-seventy votes divided by five and give each one two-hundred-and-ninety-four. And I put that in form of motion and then also that we adopt resolution number twenty-four days thirteen.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
I'm just confused with this. I'm just confused with this number four on the cover sheet. Number four on the cover sheet, your allocated vote may be cast for only, for one candidate only, or distributed amongst the candidates. So there's something confusing.
Well, we're distributing them.
Yeah, but that word "only" on there kind of confuses the issue. It says you can only...
Well, it says you can do that.
Right.
But we're not going to do that.
Right.
We're going to distribute ours, even amongst all of them, because all of them are going to be elected.
The terminology of this is just not right.
Yeah, I agree. But we're going to distribute ours because all of them are going to be elected anyway, because we don't have to do any, you know, normally we'll...
I think you're looking at it wrong, Bobby.
We'll, we'll just...
Why?
Because if you were looking, if you was, if it was meant to be the way you're looking at it, it would say only one candidate instead of one candidate only.
No, that's the way I'm looking at it. All the votes can either be cast for one candidate only, or you can cast for all five.
Yeah.
So it's, the terminology is not right.
But what, what the situation is, you see, you've got cities like Sour Lake, they have thirty votes. So they wouldn't do any dividing, they'll just cast their thirty for one. But we have fourteen-hundred-and-seventy votes, and so normally, we divide ours in a manner to assure that we elect a representative model student. But this time, there's no reason we just divide them. Each one will get the same amount. It makes no difference how many votes a nominee gets. Did I say I put that in form of motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we got it. We've already voted on it.
Oh, okay.
Item number thirteen, discussion action to reappoint Bobby Rogers to serve on the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District Board of Directors. Term expires December 31st, 2013. Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen, discussion action to reappoint Walter Glenn to serve as presiding officer, board president of the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District. Term expires December 31st, 2013. Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifteen, Jacqueline Warner, Justice Peace Number Precinct Six, discussion action regarding installation of tower foundation at First Baptist Church in Bassin for internet service to JP Six Office.
Yes, sir. Right now, I have the Verizon Air Cord, and it isn't working for our office. I'm not able to download our records or send anything, transmit anything. So I've been trying to get on with the IMS, because it's a faster internet, and I have not been able to do that because of signal with the tower and the trees. So with the First Baptist Church, they have purchased this tower. So Wayne is here to discuss that on behalf of the church.
Judge, Jackie had talked to me about this, and I think she's talked to you about it. And what they're proposing is that they will furnish the tower if the county would install the base. The base is basically a three-by-three-by-three poured concrete foundation, which a stub sticking out that you bolt the tower to. And my people can do that. I just need permission to work on private property. And then the cost of the concrete, which is, you know, you're talking about a negligible amount, I'd like to charge that to courthouse or something rather than...
That sounds good.
Than my budget. But we did the same thing on the Bragg Tower, I believe, up here. We did some work on, and we leave space on a private tower. So if the court's agreeable to it, well, then, you know, we will take care of the slab.
Okay, I had a question because there was a little doubt in my mind that that service would work that way.
Right. It's the signal. We were needing signal from the tower out from the prairie. And I have Robert here with IMS.
I'm going to answer. The problem is, is obviously, we're in East Texas, a lot of trees, trees degrade the signal, okay? So the church is putting up a tower to get internet feed there, and what I can do is put an extra piece of equipment up there and just bounce that signal over to Jackie here, just across the street there. So it would work very well for us, just this tower, just easy to get put up. And the church has the tower underneath. I don't know the ins and outs and all that, but I think the church already has the tower. They still don't help get that stuff put up.
Does that mean that service is free if we're doing all this?
I got three kids, but through college.
Wayne, you think you...
They're going to have space on the tower. The church is, if we will put the foundation in, it'll be about yard of concrete, and like the commissioner said, it'll be a three-by-three-by-three hole that's going to need to be dug by precinct workers, or maybe a backhoe, tractor, mini excavator, something like that.
What's going to be the expense of ongoing maintenance?
That is on, that is on me, okay? The monthly fee, it's forty bucks a month. I mean, that's it. It's just the high-speed internet feed gets to her. As far as security and all that, I don't really know the ins and outs of what the county does, but probably through the firewall there, it'll be supplied by the county, I'm sure. And, but as far as our fee to get the internet feed to them, it's thirty-nine ninety-five. I guess there's tax from the county, so anyway.
As far as the tower maintenance, a big responsibility of the church. As long as they, we'll just have the piece of equipment on the tower, and they're not going to charge us anything monthly to have that equipment on the tower. So if there's maintenance on our equipment, and I throw in harness, if we go up there.
Well, didn't, didn't you say that the church was going to put in the tower to start with, but yet they want us to put the base? So what happens if we don't put the base in? They're going to put it in anyway?
I would imagine so, yes. They may want to charge us for tower space, but we didn't...
But they probably won't want us to use it free.
Well, I understand that, but the cost for using it may be cheaper than the base.
Oh, sir. They'll go and charge for a month, for, as long as we have equipment on the tower. This is the cheap way out.
Well, that's what, my question to you is, is this the best way to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It probably costs, what do you think, commissioner, about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I suppose?
Something like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Put that foundation in.
I think Bobby's budget can support it. I was just kind of confused as to why, as to why we were putting in the base if the church was going to put the tower in to start with. But if it's a cost, if it's a cost factor, and that's worked out that way, then the base would be cheap.
I move that we authorize precinct three to do the installation of the base.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number sixteen, Laura Kiefer with Law Library, authorization for county judge to sign contract with Westlaw Thompson Rudders for online law library services to be used in the law library, jail, and district judges' offices. Laura?
Good morning. We have the budget hearing, and the board approved we go with Washington Two. So this is just authorizing a contract.
Okay, and how many year?
It's going to be a three-year term.
Okay. And you know what the cost is?
The cost will be under budget, six thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, including my salary. The total would be twenty-one, three, twenty-six, twenty-five. If we went with a twelve-month, we would be under budget only a hundred and thirty dollars. So we went ahead and decided to go with the three.
All right. Okay, and I don't know whether the court's familiar with this or not, but the fees for this comes from the district clerk's office, the district county clerk's office, and then commissioners' court almost matches the amount, it's about fifteen thousand that we matched to this in order to get the funds needed. Anything that you cut out of that means that it comes and improves the commissioners' court position in it. And we can do a three-year contract?
Yes, we're back on top of the contract.
Larry, you good with that?
Well, I'm not quite sure we can do the three years, but again, we're not talking about a whole lot of dollars. I'm not, materiality of it is not concerned to me.
Okay. You're not concerned? Well, I'm not concerned.
There's an addendum that's attached that if we do not have the funds within the year, we can go ahead and cancel.
Yeah, it has cancellation, I'm sure, yeah.
If it has the cancellation, it's the same thing as our lease purchase arrangement.
Yeah, correct, okay. Who authorized, judge, sign?
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seventeen, Wayne McDaniel with the sheriff's office, discussion action on revisions of vacation sick leave policy for deputies and jailers.
Yes, sir. I spoke with Rose, and I made a copy of the vacation policy with some notes made out to the side, just wanted to look at making for the deputies and jailers. They work a forty-four-hour week, so when they take a week of vacation, they only have forty hours currently, and they have to dip into either their holiday pay or their personal days to get that extra four hours to take a week off. So we want to look at making that a forty-four-hour week each time they get vacation.
I think this is a great idea, especially since I was over there for sixteen years, and if we can make it retroactive, I could actually benefit.
That, what Captain McDaniel said is true. When a deputy takes a whole week off, he has to dip into personal days or holidays to match hours for, because they do work eleven hours. So I think this is a great idea.
Got a motion?
I will put that in form of a motion that we authorize changing the personnel policy.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen, Commissioner Kirkland, permission to purchase two new motor graders through cooperative purchasing program with trade-in of two old motor graders.
I need to table this at this time, Judge.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number nineteen, Jackie Ellis, permission to sell salvage loan equipment, refrigerators, air conditioners, toilets, chairs, desks, tables, tanks, metal shoving, lights, posts and metal pieces, generator, metal roller shelf inserts, vacuum cleaners, industrial fan blade, and boat. That boat's in good shape.
That boat's in good shape. They need to come out and look at that boat. Probably need one.
She's cleaning the house, and we appreciate that.
You mind if we keep our toilet precinct two?
I'll let you keep one.
Where's all this stuff at?
Behind the innets. They did all that cleaning back there and have it all arranged, so, yes. And then, you know, there's just bits and pieces around the courthouse that we...
It looks like it's come from all over the county.
Yes, it really is.
Are you going to use the Bakes online service or something, or how are you going to sell it?
We're probably just going to try to advertise it, and we have some people that's come by asking about it, so I'm going to hope that they really want it back. They need to put some kind of stipulation. If you come, you have to leave deposit until all of it's come.
There was, what, six or eight toilets over there, so everybody interested, get in line.
They're all different shapes and sizes.
Not only that, Bobby, but when they cleaned out over there, they found a whole building of that we didn't know we had.
I believe we authorize the sale of this salvage equipment.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty, discussion action to authorize county judge to enter into agreement with Johnaker, Inc. for survey utility easement on property fronting Highway 327 for future construction. And this is, and you're, we talked about...
Yes, sir. This is actually off of the airport road, and we've worked with them on a couple situations so far, but all they're asking for here is a utility easement. And I move that we grant the county justice to enter into an agreement with them.
Second.
We, before, we got Mr. Baker here, and this is not that junkyard. This is the generator place over there. And I know that basically y'all are trying to build a showroom for your generator.
We're building a new shop facility for the generator business, and I just need to come across that power, come up that power line on the south end of the property to power and put a service in for a new shop.
Okay. I think... Is this going to put Dwayne to work?
No.
That's good.
And y'all will have this surveyed and meets and bounds and stuff, and fix up an agreement for judge to sign, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I put it in form of motion, did we have something?
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to adjourn? We adjourned.
It's hard to get that one.